Good evening. I'm Robert Floyd, South Hampton Town Moderator, and tonight we're going to be the Special Town Meeting Warrant Article Information Session. It's something I created years ago as a gift of the voters, so you can hear what the articles are going to be, not the motions, but the articles, as are in the warrant, well before the town meeting, which, in this case, will be Tuesday, December 13th, 7:00, at the William E. Norris School on Palmory Meadow Road. Looking forward to seeing you there. Article 1: To Transfer for Funding for Fiscal 2023 Retirement Obligation. To see if the town will vote to transfer a total of $6,000 from the group health insurance account to the retirement expense account to complete our financial obligation for fiscal year 2023 for the town or to take any other action relative thereto. Article 2: Transfers for Police Department Operating Expenses. To see if the town will vote to transfer an amount totaling $34,500 within the police department operating budget accounts as listed below. The amount: $32,000 from police wage account to the police overtime account. Reason: Unexpected staff shortages. Amount: $2,500 from the police expense account to the police expense account. Reason: Unexpected costs incurred. Said sums to come from the fiscal 2023 accounts listed above or to take any other action relative thereto. Article 3: Transfer from the ambulance debt. To see if the town will vote to transfer appropriate an amount totaling $68,914.80 from ambulance receipts, reserve for appropriation, and transfer $68,064 to the debt ambulance principal account, and $850 to the debt ambulance interest account for the fiscal year 2023 debt payment on the newest ambulance or take any action relative thereto. Article 4: Transfer for Assessor's Department Operating Expenses. To see if the town will vote to transfer an amount totaling $20,000 within the assessor department operating budget accounts as listed below. Amount: $5,000 from principal assessor salary account to the assessor's consulting account. Reason: Property certification. Amount: $5,000, principal assessor salary account to the cyclical inspections account. Reason: Cyclical 10-year require. And $10,000 from the principal assessor's salary account to the assessor's expense account. Reason: Cost manuals and staff. Said sums to come from the fiscal year 2023 accounts listed above or to take any other action relative thereto. Article 5: Transfer for Legal Settlement Swanson vs. Town of Southampton. To see if the town will vote to transfer $7,500 from the legal expense account #015151.300 to pay the settlement in the matter of Swanson vs. Town of Southampton or take any other action relative thereto. Article 6: Transfer for Building Department Securing and Demo from Operational Stabilization. To see if the town will vote for the appropriations of $20,000 from the operational stabilization account to be used for the purpose of securing, maintaining, demolition, and/or any other necessary functions required to prepare properties for sale by the building department. These properties have been acquired through tax title or to take any other action relative thereto. Community Preservation Projects. Article 7: CPC Funding for Local Match Mass Trails Greenway Design. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $100,000 from community preservation surcharges to the Southampton Greenway for the town's local matching share of match trails grants for the design process of the greenway bicycle and pedestrian path. Said funds to be taken from community preservation surcharges, undesignedated funds, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 8: CPC Funding for Additional Connet Park Sign Park Commission. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,000 from community preservation surcharges to the park commission for the acquisition of one additional Connet Park sign. Said funds to be taken from community preservation surcharges, open space recreation account, or take any other action relative thereto. General Bylaw Amendments. Article 9: General Bylaw Amendment Article 12 Matter on Public Ways or Places and Articles 20 Littering. To see if the town will vote to delete Article 12 Matter on Public Ways or Places and Article 20 Littering of the town's general bylaws and adopt a new article, 12 Littering and Dumping Materials on Public Ways or Places with the language below, and to authorize the town clerk to make necessary renumbering changes resulting from deletion of Article 20, if any, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 12 Littering and Dumping Materials on Public Ways or Places. Section 1. There's seven. Section 1: Littering is not permitted on public highways, streets, roads, and on other properties owned or controlled by the town. A fine plus all costs incurred by the town to clean up the violation shall be imposed for littering and/or dumping of materials along public highways, streets, roads, and other properties owned or controlled by the Town of Southampton. 2: No person shall place or dispose of discharge or cause to be disturbed any yard debris, including leaves, grass clippings, and cleared snow that would present a safety hazard to any pedestrian walkway and/or vehicle passage, including motorcycles and bicycles, on any street, lane, or other public place in town, including town right-of-way, excluding activities permitted under right-of-way permit. Section 3: No person shall place or cause to be placed in any street, lane, common park, conservation area, court, or other public place in the town any dirt, filth, ashes, garbage, animal feces, decaying animal, and vegetable matter, or rubbish of any description, providing, however, that it shall not be unlawful for any person to place suitable de-icing material upon any public sidewalk in the town for the purpose of providing traction on ice in winter. Section 4: A dog owner shall be responsible for the removal of any fecal material deposited by their dog on public sidewalks, public recreation areas, school property, public properties, and private residential property as required by Connecticut River Stormwater Committee. Section 5: Discarding unwanted items such as furniture, appliances, construction material, and other household property along public roads and/or wooded areas is a violation of this article and subject to fine. Section 6: Items left curbside for purposes of free-taking, donation, or garbage collection shall not remain more than seven days. Section 7: The police chief or his designate are the enforcing authority for this bylaw. Violators are subject to fines per town bylaws. Article 42, Non-Criminal Disposition of Violations of Bylaws, Rules, and Regulations, and may incur possible criminal charges per Mass. General Law Chapter 270, Section 16. Article 10: General Bylaw Amendment Article 40 Soliciting and Canvassing. To see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws, Article 40, Section 5A and Section 5C, application for a permit by deleting language shown as strike-through or taking any other action thereto. Section 5: The application for a permit to solicit or canvass shall be in a form as determined by the chief of police or designate. Applications for soliciting and canvass shall be made available at the Southampton Police Station and on the town website. Further, each such application shall be accompanied by a fee in an amount as determined by the schedule fees established, strike-through, and periodically updated by town meeting. Period. All applications must be submitted to the attention of the chief of police at the Southampton Police Department. Each company must obtain a permit in the name of the company. In addition to company registration, each individual, said organization, or business entity that intends to solicit or canvass on behalf of that company must also obtain a separate permit in their name. Each such application shall specify whether a permit is sought for soliciting, canvassing, or both. Further, each such application for soliciting permit shall specify the particular goods, merchandise, or services that will be marketed. Further, each such application for a canvassing permit shall specify the types of printed materials that will be distributed and the specific manner in which each printed materials will be left at various locations. A fee, see, a fee to be periodically assessed based on recommendations from the chief of police or designate shall be at a rate to cover the expenses of the permitting, including photos, lanyards, and other verification activities associated with the issuance of each permit. The fee must be paid at the time of application. Further, each such application shall be accompanied by a fee in the amount as determined by the schedule fees established, strike-through, and periodically updated at town meeting. Period. All applications must be submitted to the attention of the chief of police at the Southampton And to see if the town will vote to amend the town's bylaw, Article 40, Section 13, Violations and Penalties by Deleting Language Shown as Strike-Through and Replacing with the New Language in Bold or Take Any Other Action Thereto. Section 13, Violations of the Terms, Conditions, and Restrictions of This Bylaw, Exclusive of the Fine Regarding the Display of Permit Identification, see Section 5B, issue pursuant to the same strike-through, may result in a fine up to $300. Period. Bold, may result in a fine as follows: First offense: $100; Second offense: $200; Third and any subsequent offense: $300. Period. As set forth in the non-criminal disposition of violation of bylaws, rules, and regulations, Article 42. Each day of a continuing violation shall be a separate violation and further strike-through, provides, bold, provided that each house, business, property, mailbox, or vehicle that is solicited or canvassed in violation of this chapter, including in violation of the terms, conditions, and restrictions of any permit issued pursuant to the same, shall be a separate violation. Each such violation shall be enforced by the town police officers and shall be subject to the non-criminal disposition of violation of bylaws, rules, and regulations as provided in Article, strike-through, to be determined, bold, 42 of these bylaws and general laws, Chapter 40, Subchapter 21D. Failure to promptly wear or display the provided permit may result in a violation of up to $100 per individual and up to $100 per primary employing entity per violation per day. Feel like the section reading from Alice's restaurant, but I'll continue. Article 11: General Bylaws Delete Article 9 Dog Kennels and 16 Dogs and Adopt a New Article 16 Dogs, Licenses, Kennels, and Complaints. To see if the town will delete Article 9 Dog Kennels and Article 16 Dogs of the town's general bylaws and adopt a new article, 16 Dogs, License, Kennels, Licenses, Kennels, and Complaints, and to authorize the town clerk to make necessary renumbering changes resulting from the deletion of Article 9, if any, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 16 Dogs, Licenses, Kennels, and Complaints. Section 1 Dogs. A. No person owning a dog shall permit such dog to be off-leash on town property. This bylaw does not apply to service dogs when performing their duties, licensed hunting dogs owned by a licensed hunter while engaged in a sport of hunting or training for such hunting, dogs engaged in herding farm animals. B. No dog should be permitted off its owner's property or onto another person's property without that person's knowledge or permission. Any such person shall be required to have such dog under control at all times. C. Any person walking a dog should make provisions for the proper disposal of animal waste. Section 2 Dog Licenses. Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subchapter 137. The owner or keeper of a dog over the age of six months must obtain a license from the town clerk on an annual basis for the 12-month period running April 1 to March 31. Dog Owner B. Dog owners must obtain a license within 30 days of obtaining their new dog. C. A licensing authority shall not grant a license for a dog unless the owner of the dog provides a licensing authority with a veterinarian certification stating that the dog has been vaccinated for rabies, or that such dog is exempt from the vaccination requirement, or a notarized letter from a veterinarian that either of these certifications was issued relative such dog in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subchapter 145B. D. All dogs required to be licensed must wear the dog tag issued by the town clerk and a tag issued by a veterinarian certifying that the dog has been vacinated, hello, vaccinated at all times around its neck or body by means of a collar, or harness, or leather, or other suitable material as required by General Laws Chapter 140, Subchapter 137 and 145B. The owner or keeper shall securely attach such tags of the licensed dog shall securely attach such tags to the dog's collar. If the tags become lost, the owner or keeper of the dog shall immediately secure a substitute tag from the licensing authority. E. Every dog and kennel license application shall have a description of the symptoms of rabies printed thereon. Such description shall be supplied by the Mass. Department of Public Health. F. The above provisions do not apply to any dog housed in a research institution. G. Any household of more than four dogs is required to obtain a kennel license. Any household of less than four dogs, three months or older, who does not maintain a kennel, may elect to secure a kennel license in lieu of licensing the dogs individually. H. No person who has been found guilty of violating Mass. General Law Chapter 272, Subchapter 77, Cruelty, Subchapter 80 1/2, Devocalization, Subchapter 80A, Crapping Ears by Anyone Other Than Licensed Veterinarian, Subchapter 94, Owning, Breeding, Training, or Promoting Fighting Animals, or Subchapter 95, Attending or Exhibiting Animal Fighting Events, or penalized in any fashion for such violations, shall be eligible to license a dog for a period of five years from the date of being found guilty and/or penalized. I Enforcement. The Southampton Police Department or animal control officer shall have authority to enforce the provisions of this bylaw by violation notices, non-criminal citations under Mass. General Law Chapter 40, Section 21D, as set forth under General Bylaws, Article 42, Administrative Orders, and Civil and Criminal Court Actions. Any person who violates Sections 1 and 2 of this bylaw as determined by the Southampton Police Department or animal control officer shall be subject to fines as follows: First offense: $50; Second offense: $100; Third offense: $300; Fourth and subsequent offense: $500. No dog held in the custody of the animal control facility shall be released unless and until it is properly licensed by the town clerk. All costs associated with the dog's attention by animal control must be paid in full by the owner before the dog is released. Period. Section 3 Dog Kennels. A. A kennel is defined as a collection of dogs on a single premise, including a commercial, boarding, training, hunting, sale, breeder, domestic charitable corporation kennel, personal kennel, or veterinary kennel. See Mass. General Laws Chapter 140, Subchapter 137A for additional definitions applicable to this bylaw. B. A kennel license is required for more than four dogs that are six months of age or older, Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subchapter 136A. The registering, numbering, describing, and licensing of a dog kennel shall be conducted annually with the town clerk's office. Kennel licensing dates shall be the same as individual licensing, April 1 to March 31. C. A kennel license shall cause each dog kept in its kennel to wear, while it is at large, a collar or harness of leather or other suitable material to which a tag shall be securely attached. The tag shall have inscribed upon it the number of the kennel license, the town's name, and the year of issue. D. No kennel license shall be issued by the town clerk as licensing authority under the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subchapter 137A, unless the applicant for such license shall first comply with the requirement cited in Animal Laws and Regulations in Massachusetts. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 272, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 129. Or you can get a guppy. The kennel owner or other person maintaining the kennel shall make available for inspection by an animal control officer, natural resource officer, deputy natural resource officer, fishing game warden, or police officer, the name and address of the dog owner, and vaccination status of each dog kept in a kennel. This information must be kept at the kennel. F. No owner or keeper of a dog that is part of a commercial kennel, as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Subchapter 136A, shall allow such dog to go unrestrained outside its enclosure or runway at any time. G. Enforcement. The town's designated animal control officer and/or the Southampton Police Department shall have authority to enforce the provisions of this bylaw by violation notices, non-criminal citations in the Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21D, as set forth under General Bylaws, Article 42, Administrative Orders, and Civil and Criminal Court Actions. Any person who violates any of the provisions of Section 3 of this bylaw as determined by the Southampton Police Department and/or the town's designated animal control officer shall be subject to fines as follows: First offense: $500; Second and subsequent offenses: $750. Section 4 Dog Complaints Hearings. A. Dog Complaints. A written complaint must be submitted to the select board by the plaintiff within 10 days of such occurrence. The complaint shall provide names, addresses, and contact information. The complaint shall describe the dog and fully identify the name of the owner and further specify why and how the dog is considered to be a nuisance and/or behaving in a dangerous manner. The complaint shall specify times, dates, and reasons, and provide a list of all individuals who may have knowledge of the issue. B. Hearing Procedures. Hearings will be conducted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Subchapter 157, and within 30 days of receipt of the complaint, absent extenuating circumstances. The hearing will be included in the agenda for a regular select board meeting and held in open session. The town administrator will notify the animal control officer and all involved persons of the date and time of the hearing. C. Decision. At the conclusion of the hearing, or shortly thereafter, the select board may render its decision or take the matter under advisement, announcing the intended date of decision. A copy of decision will be filed with the town clerk's office. Failure to comply with the select board's decision will refer to the animal control officer, inspector, for resolution. Article 12 General Bylaw Amendment Article...
26.
Huh?
26.
26, thank you. Teamwork, curb cuts. To see if the town will vote to amend the town's bylaw, 36, curb cuts by deleting language shown as strike-through and replacing with the new language in bold or take any other action relative thereto. Current bylaw, it's all in strike-through. No person shall make a curb cut unless a permit is issued by the highway superintendent in the case of townways or by the Department of Public Works of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the case of state highway layouts. The Southampton Select Board, in the case of the townways, shall establish rules and regulations for the construction of curb cuts. Provisions shall be made for traffic and pedestrian safety in granting said permits. Period. Proposed Change, all in bold. No person shall make a curb cut unless a permit is issued by the highway superintendent in the case of townways by the Department of Public Works of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the case of state highway layouts. The Southampton Select Board has established rules and regulations for the construction of curb cuts. Provisions shall be made for traffic, bicycle, and pedestrian safety in granting such permits. A. Curb Cut. Shall mean any entrance onto... A. Curb cut shall mean any entrance onto a public way, a presumptive public way, including but not limited to, driveways, access roads, logging roads, farm roads, and are subject to driveway regulations for Southampton. Town of Southampton website, driveway regulations. Okay, this section is general bylaws, new. Article thirteen, General Bylaw, new, marking of town-owned vehicles. To save the town will vote to adopt a new general bylaw, marking of town-owned vehicles as listed below or taking any other action relative thereto. Town-owned vehicles excluding police department vehicles specially designated by the select board shall be appropriately marked with the name of Southampton, together with the town seal and name of the department on both sides of the vehicle. Police department and fire EMS department vehicles may substitute the police badge or fire Maltese cross in place of the town seal. This requirement also applies to smaller town-owned motorcycles, all-terrain vehicles, ATVs, et cetera, which shall be marked with Town of Southampton only. Each vehicle will be marked with appropriate and contrasting lettering that is highly visible and easily identifiable as a Southampton town-owned vehicle. All town-owned vehicles shall be brought into compliance by September thirty, twenty twenty-three. Article fourteen, General Bylaw, new, Affordable Housing Trust. To save the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Subchapter fifty-five C, and adopt the following general bylaw, establishing the Southampton Affordable Housing Trust, or taking any other action relative thereto. Southampton Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw. There shall be a Southampton Affordable Housing Trust, the purpose of which shall be to provide for the preservation and creation of affordable housing in the town of Southampton for the benefit of low and moderate income households. The trust shall be governed by a board of trustees in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-five C, and the authority granted by town meeting as revised from time to time. One, there shall be a five-member board of trustees, board, of whom one shall be a member of the select board, and four qualified residents who would bring to the trust relevant personal and/or professional experience, knowledge, or interest in real estate, finance, affordable housing, banking, architecture, social services, or the like. Trustees shall be appointed or reappointed by the select board for two-year terms, with the exception that two initial appointments shall be made for one year, only so as to allow staggered terms. Nothing in this subsection shall prevent the select board from appointing the town administrator as an ex officio member of the board without the power to vote. The trustees too. The trustees are hereby authorized to execute a declaration of trust and certificate of trust for the Southampton Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be recorded with the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds and filed with the Hampshire Registry, District of the Land Court. Three, the trust is a governmental body for purposes of Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Subchapters eighteen to twenty-five. Four, the trust is a board of the town for purposes of Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-B and Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Subchapter fifteen-A, but agreements and conveyance between the trust and agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, departments, and public instrumentalities of the town shall be exempt from said Chapter thirty-B. The powers of the trustees, all of which shall be carried on in furtherance of the purposes set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Subchapter fifty-five C, shall include the following: A. To accept and receive real property, personal property, or money, by gift, grant, contribution, devise, or transfer from any person, firm, corporation, or other public or private entity, including but not limited to money, grants of funds, or other property tendered to the trust in connection with any bylaw or any general or special few- a special law, or any other source, including money from Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four B. B. To purchase and retain real or personal property, including without restriction, investments that yield a high rate of income or no income. Each purchase shall be approved by the select board, which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. Should the select board disapprove a purchase, their reasoning shall be explained in open meeting. C. To sell, lease, exchange, transfer, or convey any personal, mixed, or real property at public auction or by private contract for such consideration and on such terms as to credit or otherwise, and to make such contracts and enter into such undertakings relative to trust property as the board deems advisable, notwithstanding the length of any such lease or contract. D. To execute, acknowledge, and deliver deeds, assignments, transfers, pledges, leases, covenants, contracts, promissory notes, releases, grant agreements, and other instruments, sealed or unsealed, necessary, proper, or incident to any transaction to which, in which, the board engages for the accomplishment of the purposes of the trust. E. To employ advisors and agents, such as accountants, appraisers, and lawyers, as the board deems necessary. F. To pay reasonable compensation and expenses to all advisors and agents, and to appropriation and compensation between income and principal as the board deems advisable. G. To apportion receipts and charges between incomes and principal as the board deems advisable, to amortize premiums and establish funds for such purpose, and to create reserves for depreciation, depletion, or otherwise. H. To participate in any reorganization, recapitalization, merger, or similar transactions, and to give proxies or powers of attorney with or without power of substitution, to vote any securities or certificates of interest, and to consent to any contract, lease, mortgage, purchase, or sale of property by or between any corporation and any other corporation or person. I. To deposit any security with any protective reorganization committee, and to delegate to such committee such powers and authority with relation thereto as the board may deem proper, and to pay out of trust property such portion of expenses and compensation of such committee as the board may deem necessary and appropriate. J. To carry property for accounting purposes other than acquisition date values. K. To make distributions or divisions of principal and kind. L. To comprise, attribute, defend, enforce, release, settle, or otherwise adjust claims in favor or against the trust, including claims for taxes, and to accept any property, either in total or partial satisfaction of any indebtedness or other obligation, and subject to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Subchapter fifty-five C, to continue to hold the same for such period of time as the board may deem appropriate. M. To manage or improve real property, and to abandon any property which the board determined not to be worth retaining. N. To hold all or part of the trust property uninvested for such purposes and for such time as the board may deem appropriate. O. To extend the time for payment of any obligation by the trust. Six, the extent of borrowing is limited to eighty percent of the trust assets, and any purchase, sale, or lease of any interest in real property requires a two-thirds vote of the board of trustees. Seven, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, all monies paid to the trust in accordance with any zoning bylaw, exaction fee, or private contributions shall be paid directly into the trust and need not be appropriated or accepted and approved into the trust. Revenues appropriated into the trust become trust property, and to be expended, these funds need not be further appropriated. All monies remaining in a trust at the end of any fiscal year, whether or not expended by the board within one year of the date they were appropriated into the trust, remain trust property. Eight, money received from Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four B, Community Preservation Act, shall be used exclusively for community housing and shall remain subject to all the rules, regulations, and limitations of that chapter when expended by the trust, and such funds shall be accounted for separately by the trust, and provided further that at the end of each fiscal year, the trust shall ensure that all expenditures of funds received from said Chapter forty-four B are reported to the Southampton Community Preservation Committee for inclusion in the Community Preservation Initiatives Report from CP-three to the Department of Revenue. Nine, the trust is a public employer, and the members of the board are public employees for purposes of Mass. General Law, Chapter twenty-five B. The B read. The trust shall be deemed ten. The trust shall be deemed a municipal agency and a trustee's special municipal employees for purposes of Mass. General Law, Chapter twenty-two, six, eight. The trust is exempt from Mass. General Law, Chapters fifty-nine and sixty-two, and from any other provisions concerning payment of taxes based upon or measured by property or income imposed by the Commonwealth or any political subdivision thereof. Twelve, the books and records of the trust shall be audited annually by an independent auditor in accordance with accepted accounting practices, period. Article fifteen, General Bylaw, new articles sixteen, A Humane Care and Treatment of Domesticated Animals. To save the town will vote to adopt a new general bylaw, Article sixteen-A, Humane Care and Treatment of Domesticated Animals, as printed below, or taking any other action relative thereto. Article sixteen-A, Humane Care and Treatment of Domesticated Animals. Section one, Definitions. The definitions set forth at Mass. General Law, Chapter one forty, Subchapter one thirty-six A, are hereby incorporated by reference to the extent not inconsistent with or otherwise defined in the subsequent provisions of this bylaw. Section two, Domesticated Animals, for the purpose of this bylaw are defined by the Mass. Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, three twenty-one, CMR nine point oh two three, shall include, without limitation, dogs, cats, or any animal which is kept for companionship, entertainment, service, or livelihood. Section three, every owner or keeper of domesticated animals shall provide their animals with sufficient potable water, food, proper shelter, and protection from the weather, including extremes of heat and cold. Owners shall also provide veterinary care sufficient to prevent suffering and the spread of disease. Owners shall provide humane care and treatment for animals, and owners' humane care and treatment of animals shall include, but not be limited to, treating and caring for all domesticated animals in a manner consistent with the requirements of General Laws, Chapter one forty, Subchapter one seven four E. Section four, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter one forty, Subchapter one seventy-four F, it shall be a violation of this bylaw to confine an animal in a motor vehicle in a matter that could reasonably expect the threat and health of the animal due to exposure to extreme heat or cold. Animals shall not be left outdoors for extended periods of time when owners, keepers, or other individuals are not home to care for or monitor them. Section five, no owner or keeper shall abandon any animal. For the purpose of this section, abandonment shall be defined as the willful desertion of an animal, which shall include, but not be limited to, the failure to claim an impounded animal upon receipt of notice that the period of impoundment has ended. Section six, Enforcement. The designated animal control officer and/or the Southampton Police Department shall have authority to enforce the provisions of this bylaw by violation notices, noncriminal citations under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one D, as set forth under General Bylaw, Article forty-two, Administrative Office Orders, and Civil and Criminal Court Actions. Section seven, Penalties. Any person who violates this bylaw, as determined by the Southampton Police Department or the designated animal control officer, shall be subject to fines as follows: First offense, fifty dollars; Second offense, one hundred dollars; Third and subsequent offenses, three hundred dollars. And that, my friends, are our articles, fifteen of them, for our special town meeting, Tuesday, December thirteenth, at the William E. Norris School on Palmeri Meadow Road, seven o'clock. Be there early. See you there. Cheers.